Hello, hello. I cannot hear you. Can you hear me? Obviously, if you can't, it's pointless to ask that. Let me ask in the Reddit chat. My personal A dot dot dot. Okay. Oh, personal archives. Cool. Hello? There you go. I can hear you a little bit. Hello?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. Can you hear me? Obviously, you can, because you just said.
Yeah, I can. Um, yeah. I have no idea how to change the audio output on Zoom, because I haven't been using it for a long time.
Okay, well, you gotta go in. You got it working.
Yeah, all good. I'm using my condenser mic.
Oh, cool. That's the one that does the automatic, not filtering, but it's very close to you, so it doesn't pick up background noise?
Yeah, as a, as a interesting frequency response, or actually, it can take the background noise if I increase sensitivity, but I reduced it.
Oh, I can't hear any background noise, so whatever you're doing is working, or you're in a very quiet place.
Yeah. It's just a minimal fan turning on the background. Hey, by the way, my name's Chris. Nice to meet you, Barry.
Nice to meet you, Chris. I am in Albuquerque, New Mexico. How about yourself?
Oh, Albuquerque. Albuquerque. How do you, how do you pronounce it again? Alba- Albuquerque?
Albuquerque.
Okay.
Yeah, we, or I mean, in Spanish, it would be Albukerke, but.
I see.
It's, you know.
Would that be like, in the, it's, it's in the United States, right?
It is in the United States. It's in New Mexico, but New Mexico is a state in the United States. So I'm guessing you're not in the United States.
Yeah, I'm from Malaysia, actually.
Oh, that's right. I think I saw that, uh, somewhere dot M Y. Yeah.
Yeah. Because, uh, you can tell from the currency.
That's right. Yeah, it was the Rick Toedang, some weird currency, sorry, but yeah, that's why. Um. So the time zone is way the hell out there, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, it's nine P M. Here. What time is in the U S?
Uh, six, uh, six eleven. So you are fifteen hours ahead of us.
Yeah, fifteen hours ahead. It's the, it's the thirtieth of November here.
Yes, the same here. We're still on the same day, but you, in two hours and forty nine minutes, you'll go over to, uh, December.
Yeah.
Cool.
Time flies, eh? Time really flies. My god. Nearly a year has passed.
Yeah, that's right.
Sure goes through.
Yeah. Um, yeah.
How, how old are you?
I'm sixty seven, and don't tell me I don't sound sixty seven, because I am.
I see. Uh, well, you just, you sound really energetic, so I'm, that's why I really get the impression that you're younger.
Okay, I guess that, that's, that's a good thing. I mean, I don't have, my voice doesn't crack, like, uh, like some old people do, but I, I mean, I, I don't really talk a lot, but I do a lot of this kind of thing, uh, and I used to stream, so kind of keeps my voice, keeps my voice going.
Yeah, I think that helps. Uh, well, I'm twenty two, a little bit of a background myself. I'm twenty two. I'm from Malaysia, Srawa, and mostly, they call it the East Coast. I just started my foundations in information technology, and, um, I'm, I just started learning Python.
Okay.
So like, towards the end of the course, which is next month, um, I'm required to like build a program, any program that serves us, but, uh, a useful function, right? So I had, I had, uh, so like, they said it could be anything as long as you use it in Python, so.
Okay.
Like the idea, so the idea I came up with, uh, after some thinking was a vending machine, because that's what I always.
I saw that.
Using this goals, interesting.
Now, let me ask you a quick question. Did you run this idea by your professor, uh, and say, you know, is this something reasonable? Is, am I trying to do too much here?
Uh, she said, uh, it's definitely a, a good idea, and she said that you'll get extra points if you try something that we didn't teach you yet.
Okay.
If there's something interesting about it. So like, I've actually written some lines of code.
Right, I saw that. I, I remember seeing that, and someone actually commented on it, saying, uh, your code is.
There's a new one.
It official. Oh, there's another comment. Someone's made a second comment.
Yeah, the, well, I've actually had some help from a person, uh, about two hours ago. But this, but we're not done yet. I'm not done yet, but the guy is like offline already. So like, so far, we came, I came up with this code.
Okay.
How do I screen share this?
I had given you permission to screen share. That's a, unfortunately, Zoom starts out without permission, but I actually turned it on this time. I remembered. Usually, I forget. So there, okay, there we go. There we go. All right, so you're using an escape code? While, to get, to get like light, to get lit up and see coloring? Online nine?
Uh, I forgot how I got the colors in, but.
No, it's, it's V T one hundred coloring, but you're, yeah, that's fine. It's fine, it's fine nine.
Preferences.
Right. It's line nines where you have it, but I mean, that's, uh, that's, it's a little bit fancy, but okay. Okay.
So what I did was, I created a JSON file. This contained all the information of.
Okay, good. So this is one big array, right? That was one big array?
Biggeray?
Yeah, it's an array of, of objects. It is.
Oh, yeah, it's an array of different, like chocolate milk.
So label type, price, and quantity. Good deal. That looks good. That's good. That's how I would have started.
Yeah, something along the lines of this, and then like, basically, this code accesses that, the, this JSON file.
Right, right, right. So let's see. So let me just look at it real quick here. So, uh, go a little bit, okay, there. So choose one or two choice input block. Okay, um, if choice, oh, okay, if choice equal equal to pass, I forget what that, does that return, you know, that doesn't return you, that just, what does that do? I forget.
Technically, uh, technically, I'm still trying to work on this one. Uh, basically, I'm trying to create a, a menu where, where like, there's two options. One, if I x, is I access the order menu. The second one, I would access an admin, admin menu.
Oh, right, right, okay.
All the inventory files, but I haven't worked on that yet.
Okay, now let me suggest that, um, you, instead of trying to do a big if then statement, maybe say if choice equal equals two, um, just call another subroutine, call it admin console or something, and then just, so you don't have the rest of your code inside of an if block, uh, just call a function to do that for you.
I see. Would you might, would you, are you familiar with like Google Remote Desktop?
Uh, I'm familiar with.
Control.
I am familiar with our desktop. Um, I don't think Zoom will let you do this. Let me check real quick. Hang on.
Well, you can actually do a separate one on Chrome, if I'm not mistaken.
I, I mean, I'm trying to keep everything in this one place, but let me, uh, there is, there is a chat here, if I can find it. There we are. And see if I can do anything with it. Okay, so what I'm saying here is do something like, I'll type it out here. And I'm gonna use the, whoa, are you there?
Yeah.
Oh, you stopped screen sharing.
What do I, oh, because I couldn't, I couldn't next, I couldn't see the window when I screenshared.
Oh.
Now that, oh, now that I'm screen sharing, you can see it again.
Okay.
So.
All right, let me. Okay, let me try that again. Um, if choice. Uh, eleven. Something like this.
Okay. If choice equals to admin console.
Yeah, basically, just take it to another function. Don't, don't try to put a huge if then statement in this one function.
Okay, so I remove the pass.
Mm-hmm.
I do that.
There you go. Yes. So now we know for, oh, that's just gonna call a function called admin console, which you will write later on. Um, because I assume you want to focus on the buy a product one first, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So now we know that, um, we're definitely have chosen one, right? I mean, you should probably check to see if they type in something that's not one or two, but, you know, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Um. But okay. So you want to put, welcome to the vending machine. Um, for I enumerate inventory, print. Okay, that seems to be working. Um.
There is one problem here where, let's say, okay, so if I go to buy a product, let's say I want to buy a, uh, Snickers bar.
Mm-hmm.
And let's say it's two dollars eighty cents. Let's say if I put insufficient money, two dollars, that's right, if I, let's say if I put enough, it will state the change.
Okay.
Let's say I do it one more time. Let's say I want to buy a Snickers bar again. Hey, what do I do?
You typed it in for, do you want to buy a product, or, uh, do you want to go to the admin console?
Oh, I see. Okay, so select the Snickers. Let's say I entered an invalid, uh, insufficient money.
Okay.
Two dollars. It says I did not insert enough money. How do I make it such that it would loop me back into the order menu so that I can try again, instead of it finishing the process with?
Sure. Let me see where you have that you did not insert any enough money in your code.
Uh, that did not insert money code, okay. Uh, I think it's this one, you know?
Okay. Oh, so you actually return from the function. Now, what you could do, well, let's be careful here, um. Uh, do, instead of return to a continue, that'll start the whole while loop in neck again.
I see.
But now try it and see what happens. I could be wrong.
So it's a. Ah, all right.
So that keeps you going. I assume you have an exit plan, right?
The exit plan, as in like.
How does the user, yeah, how does the user get out of this menu if they decided they don't want to buy anything anymore?
Uh, okay.
They have to buy stuff forever.
Yeah, let's say zero eight. Oh, yeah, there's no cancel button. You have to choose, so it's like five dollars.
Okay.
I don't know, and it says thank you for using the vending.
Okay, okay, good, good. Okay, so after you bought one item, it does let you get out of the loop. Fantastic. Okay. Now, when you say here is your tricks and your two fifty and change, do you want that two fifty to carry over to the next iteration of the loop? Or do we just assume that they take the two fifty and go away, and if they want to buy something else, they have to use, uh, new money, not the money that they, they don't have, like, we don't like keep track of how much money they have total, do we?
Oh, yeah, that's, uh, for the customer's money, we don't keep track of how much money they have. Uh, essentially, it's just, um, I, I was thinking of like, giving this virtual vending machine a set amount of money it can use, but then I feel like that would be too complicated. For example, like, maybe I give it like ten, ten dollar notes, ten five dollar notes, and twenty one dollar notes, so like, it keeps giving the change. If it runs out, you have to replace it, but I think that's a bit more, I think.
That is a bit more. Are you gonna have it give change just in terms of which bills you're handing out, or even, you're not gonna do that either?
Yeah, as in like which bills I'll be giving out, like the type of bills.
Right, right.
It takes into account every single bill that's given, all this change, including the coins. That's one of the more additional, additional ideas that.
I got it. But you're not doing it right now.
Yeah, not right now.
Okay.
But I think the basics, what I want to achieve with this is that, okay, now, now you, I can choose a product. Now I want to work on the admin panel, where, where that, if I choose to access this, I have to enter a passcode. Once I enter the passcode, it gives me a range, it, it gives me access to a different range of actions to, to do. But like, one of it is to add and remove products, which will automatically be written into this JSON automatically. So I just, so ideally, I want to use this console here to add the items, the name of the product and the price. Uh, ideally, also, it should be able to calculate the initial cost to buy that, let's say, the Snickers bar, and I'm gonna sell it at a higher price for profit, right?
Okay.
So ideally, it also keeps track of the profits and tells me how much, basically how much I earned from the price difference.
Okay.
And also, uh, lastly, would be an option to adjust the price.
Well, of an existing item.
Yeah, of an existing item.
Okay, okay. All right. So you've done, uh, how much of the admin console have you done so far?
Um, I, none, not yet.
Okay. Um, actually, where it says admin console, just say return admin console, because, oh, actually, hang on. No, that's fine, because actually, when the admin console is done, you want to come back here, so that's actually okay. Um, all right, so let's go ahead and write the admin console, a new function called admin console, takes no arguments.
Okay, so this is, we start from here, huh?
Well, we need, we're gonna create a new function, def admin console, oh, not inside this function, we're gonna do it separately.
Okay.
Not inside the main function.
So. Which?
Above line, above line seven, for example, or below the end of that. Yeah, we're just a whole new function, not main. So def admin console takes no arguments.
Do I like that?
Well, just the same way we had it, admin underscore console, that, it's the same function. Okay. Okay, and then your colon, just like you would do for any function. All right, so the first thing you probably want to do, uh, no, not the semicolon, the colon like you do on line nine. We're just defining another function. It's like main, but it's not, it's a different function. So probably the first thing you want to do is input, um, password, right? You want to get the password.
Yeah.
So that's, we need to do that.
Do I do like an I N T, isn't?
No, input, just like you have on line eighteen.
Input.
And then, you know, probably password maybe, in, in the quotations, and remember, we have to assign it to a variable. Otherwise, we can't do anything with it. Well, we could, but we're not gonna do that, so.
Input.
This is what the user will see, so password, passcode, that's fine. Uh, and then assign this to like pass equals.
Outside of the def?
No, 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 ins, no, 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 inside the def, um.
Okay.
Do you see how you have choice equals input, little arrow thingy on line nineteen?
Yeah.
We're doing the same thing. Yeah, we're doing the same thing here, except we're assigning it to a different variable. Let's call it pass.
Test.
No, sorry, pass, as in P A S S, short for password.
Okay.
And we're gonna do that on line eight. We're gonna say pass equals input passcode. So we're gonna put this on line eight, not line nine, and we're gonna go up a little bit and see where you have input passcode. You want to, input passcode returns a string. So you want to say pass equals input passcode.
Wait, hold on.
Yeah, usually it'll be on the same line as, just like you have it for line twenty.
Yeah, so I do it on the front of input or the back of it?
The front. It's because we're assigning to a variable.
Because. Oh, okay, something like that. Oh, wait, something's wrong here.
Usually, we don't use capital. We just use P, all lowercase, but I don't know if that's what it's complaining about. Oh, sorry, pass is a protected word, so make it P W equals input. Sorry, I forgot, pass is actually a keyword. We don't want to do that. Okay? Alrighty. And so on the next line, we're gonna check to see if the password matches. Why is it giving you gray?
Yeah, it's a weak, there's like a weak warning here.
What is it? What's, he wants lowercase p, I think.
Okay.
There we go. That should be fine. No, what's its warning? Single quotes? Does it want you to use, does it want you to use single quotes there instead of double quotes? Because you're using single quotes everywhere else.
I see. I think it's.
Oh, I think it wants, I think it wants spaces before and after the equal sign, just like you had elsewhere.
Uh-huh, okay. So technically, so I can.
Well, don't, don't, yeah, password, that's. What, what's it unhappy? Click on the little brighty thing.
This thing?
No, 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 when you go over the word password, that little light bulb comes up.
Oh.
What does that light bulb say?
Remove assignment target, remove statement.
No, remove statement, add hint for, oh, they want you to say string password equals input passcode, because, um, I think that's what they mean, they, because they, it's a type, but I mean, I don't care.
Do I put like string?
Yeah, S T R I N G space. See if that helps. I don't know, it might not. Now it's complaining about. No, no, it's a space. String is a separate keyword. Now it's complaining about. Okay, go to add type hint for password and see what. Yeah, actually, get rid of string. Sorry, I think I misled you there.
All right.
Okay, go to the light bulb. Uh, add type hint for variable password, see what the choices are.
S T.
Oh, that's what it meant. See if that helps, get rid of the little soft warning.
I see.
You'll have to hit, you'll have to go to the end of the line and hit return before it catches up to that.
So what does this S T R do?
It tells the, it tells Python that you're using password as a string, instead of an integer or a whatever. So it's, it's not necessary, because it would have figured it out anyway, but that's, that's called type hinting. So, but hit return now and see if that soft warning goes away. Okay, what's it unhappy with?
Uh, the def main, okay, and just put this back like this, oh, wait.
No, why, why does it have password in gray is what I'm asking.
Oh, yes. That's true. I have no idea. Wait.
I mean, it doesn't do that with your other variables.
What if I?
There we go. Nope.
That's really odd. I don't know what's going on.
Okay, try running it and just see if we, we haven't broken it. And by the way, remember to make backups or get saves regularly.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, you probably want to put a space there, but yeah, that's fine.
Okay, that works, I guess. So where do I input the password?
Well, you would type it right there.
Right here.
Or it says pass. Oh, sorry, do you mean in, when the program is running, or in the code?
Program starting.
Right there, just type it in. Type in anything. There you go.
But. Okay.
Right now, I'm not doing it. Oh, in the, what do you mean? Okay, so in the code, you have basically set password equal to whatever you just typed in.
Like that?
No, no. I think what you want to do is say if password equal equal. And remember, two, three, four, five is a string, so you need to quote it, because input always returns strings, not, not anything else.
Like that? Quote it?
Yes. And actually, let's say if password not equal to two, three, four, five, because then we could just return them back to the main menu. So let's just say. You need a colon there. You need a colon.
Oh, okay.
Because it's in a statement. Okay, is the red line still there?
Oh, yeah, still there.
Oh, there's an extra space there. You can get rid of it. No, what's it complaining about? Click on that. Oh, because you don't have an if body yet, maybe?
Possibly.
And normally, you would put, normally you would put the password equal equal two, three, four, four, five in parentheses, because it's a condition. You don't really need to, but kind of nice.
Parenthesis. Hold on. So like, if I, okay, let's, let's try save password not equal.
Okay.
What's this? What's the symbol for not equal?
Exclamation point? Equal?
Like that?
That, yes. Okay. Return, uh, uh, next line. And now say, you know, print wrong, a wrong password, and then return. You probably want to tell them they've got the wrong password. And then line after that can just be return, because it will return you back to the main menu. Fantastic. Now you'll need to comment at line nine, because it's interfering with, you haven't finished it yet.
Oh.
So just put a, a hash mark at the very beginning of it, so that it's commented out.
This one?
There you go.
My bad.
No, the other one. Yeah, sorry. The other one. This is the one we want to use. It's the, it's the line nine that, no, no, that's, that's the one we want to use. Line nine is one we don't want to use. There we go. So now you should be able to, um, if you try it and put in the wrong password, it, it should not work. Oh, oh, you typed in the right password?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, if you do that.
Oh, even if I entered the wrong password, actually, um, uh.
Well, right now, we don't have anything. Okay.
Two zero zero zero. Still.
And scroll up, scroll up, scroll up and see what it says. It didn't still access. Scroll up, see wrong password.
Oh, wrong password, but it still brought me here.
It, well, yeah, back to the main menu, not to the admin menu.
I see. I need to return it to the, the admin menu, right? So like, do I?
Oh, you do?
Yeah, I actually planned to return it to them, to the admin men, sorry, to the admin menu, the main menu. How do I return it to the main menu? Because like.
That's what it's doing now. See? Oh, I see, I see your problem. You're saying, um.
Yeah, because when I, when I tried to enter the password.
Okay, then hang on, um. Okay, that's a little bit more, so while true, um. So I mean, it does return you to the main menu, right? That's what it's doing right now.
Mm-hmm.
So it's doing that right now, but I mean, oh, I'm sorry, you want to return to the one or two menu, not the list of products menu?
Oh, no, the, the problem is even like, even like when I'm trying to access the admin.
Uh-huh.
The admin section, like, when, even when the passcode is, oh, okay, never mind. I, I, I thought it actually gave me access to the admin, uh, portal, when, if I, if I entered, okay. But it, but instead, it brought me to the orders section, instead of.
It brings you back. Yes. Do you want it to take you back to the main menu?
Yeah, main menu.
Okay, let's go back into your main code here. This could be a little bit trickier, um. Let's see. Oh, yeah, do this. Admin console semi, okay, where we have the call to the admin, not the definition, but the call, a little bit lower, I think, line twenty three-ish. No, after line twenty five-ish. And then do, uh, continue after that line. And that should bring the you back to the whole loop. So let's see what happens.
Oh, wow, that's cool.
Yeah. So that just continued, just says start the, whatever loop you're in, continue it without going through the rest of it. So you're back to the while true then.
I see.
Okay.
Okay, interesting. So, okay, I'll definitely have to dissect this later on, but definitely is, is interesting.
But no, you should understand that while we're doing it.
Um. So continuing, so basically what happens is if I enter the wrong password here, it's going to keep going down this line. It's going to keep running, running this, 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 and then it goes, when it, when it sees continue, it brings you back to.
Whatever loop you're inside, it brings you back one step. So you're inside the while true loop. So it takes you back to while, to line sixteen in the while true loop. If you had another loop inside that one, it would, it would not take you all the way back. It only takes you back one step, the, the enclosing loop.
So this continue brings you up here.
A continue brings you back to line sixteen.
Line sixteen, around here.
Because that's, because that's, you're, you're, um, you're, you're inside of while true, so continue brings you back to the first line inside of while true.
Yeah, so it brings back to the, the subset of while true, anything that's in there. So if I could, so like, if I, if I wanted to continue like two steps up, whoa, how would that work, like in the code?
I don't really, I don't, I don't, I don't really know how you do that. I mean, it's, it's a good question. I don't know if there's a way, I mean, there's probably a way to do it, but I've never, I've never done that. I've never, I've never done that. I've never had to say continue. You can't do continue, continue, because the first continue will stop it. Um, I've never had to do that. I mean, you could set flags and stuff, but I mean, I've never, I've never seen anyone have to do that. By the way, just so you know, this meeting will end automatically in ten minutes, but then I'll send you a, I can start a new meeting and I'll send you a link to that one, okay? Just so you know.
Sure, no worries.
It'll endure without warning us. That's the problem. It'll just sort of do it. And I guess you don't need the semicolon, because Python doesn't require semicolons, so line twenty five, you can get rid of the semicolon.
Line twenty five, semicolon, okay. Alright, so now we have that.
But now we go back to the admin console. Now we actually need to do something in the admin console if they get the right password. So now we wanna print the um, the admin console menu.
Alright. So how would I do that?
Okay, so you need to go, so if you after line twelve, you're still in the program, then you have entered the, you have entered the password correctly. So now, starting with line thirteen, we wanna start printing the menu.
Do I print uh? Like, do I print? Do I type it like here or do I like type it here?
Here, because uh you are inside of a function. We're gonna stay inside of the function.
Alright. So I'm gonna start with, let's say, print number one. Uh uh choose.
Wait, oh, yeah, you wanna print the header saying choose an option.
Choose action.
Need quotation marks.
Oh, yeah, my bad. Keep forgetting about that. Choose action, choose action, alright.
Sure.
Okay.
And then you list your options here.
Hmm? Let's see. If I add and remove items, technically, I don't have to, I I don't technically, I don't have to create another option for for changing the price, cause if I click on number one, add or remove items, they should, it should bring me to, I should just code like a sub, a sub uh directory where I can change, where I can add and remove the items and also adjust the price in the same directory, correct?
Um. Yes, I mean, I mean. Sure, I mean, you could basically just have it, um. Let's just, yeah, let's just continue with this. I'm not sure exactly. I mean, you have three different things you can do, right? You can add item, remove item, or edit item. That's, that's what I would say the three, um, the three possibilities are.
Okay. Should I say add, remove items separately or should they?
I would do.
One.
No, because I mean, you want really add item and remove item are two separate things. So add item, remove item, edit item. That's sort of the normal things you do with something is you either add a new one, get rid of an existing one, or you change one of the ones that's already there without adding or removing anything.
Alright, understand, remove items. Definitely going to be the fourth one, which is. Profit, uh, let's see. How do I explain it? Let's see, uh.
Profit monitor, um, profits to date, sales. Well, sales is a little bit different from profit, but yeah, sure.
To you too, it's too, it's too general, huh?
No, that's fine. Actually, it should be sales, and then sales can tell you, you sold total of this many goods and you made a profit of this much. So your profit will be a percentage of your sales. But I, that's fine to keep them together, because I think when someone wants sales data, they want both. So I would keep that as one, um. One item.
Okay.
Okay, now, of course, you need to ask them for input, so they can type in a number.
Do I start with I N T? Wait.
Uh, no, because input will return a string. It always returns a string. So it would be just like you have, you actually literally copy line, the choice line that you have below. Line thirty two? Yeah, I mean, you'll change what's inside of it, but aside from that, yeah.
How does this know how many inputs there are? There's like four choices here. How do I tell the input that there's four choices?
Um. What do you mean? So that someone doesn't type in like five?
Yeah.
You have to do that separately. You have to look at choice and then say if choice equals this, do this. If trace equals this, do this and so forth. Um. And then at the very end, say. Yeah, that's fine. That that'll, that'll prompt them, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so now what you're gonna do here is we're gonna write separate functions for each of the four options.
Okay.
So we're gonna say if choice is equal to one, we'll call the add items function and then do a continue after that, just like we did for when we call an admin console, the same structure.
Oh, wait, if. Something like that, wait.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay.
And then we wanna call add items, add underscore items. You need a colon there, by the way, but yeah.
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
Okay, good.
Oh, we need to define what item is, right?
We will need to define all of these functions. We'll have to write them ourselves, but for right now, we're just letting it go between which functions it wants to go.
Okay. So I do add items and then.
It's a function, so remember to do a function. It's a, you know, parentheses, parentheses.
My, my grammar is really bad. What's, what's a parenthesis again?
Oh, um, it's a thing that you use in line fifteen in in line thirteen and fourteen and seventeen and eighteen?
You, you, you mean this thing?
That thing.
This one?
Yes, that one.
Oh, I call, oh, we call them brackets here.
Oh, we call brackets the square looking brackets that you would use to define an array. What do you call those?
Oh, brackets too.
Okay.
Yeah.
We, we say parentheses, brackets, and braces for the curly ones.
Okay.
Okay.
Parentheses, brackets, braces. I think that's the, that's the official English one. I think that we're using.
Probably, yeah.
English.
That's fine. Um, okay, and just say call add items. We're gonna call the function add items. Mm hmm. Per, there you go. And then after it returns from add items, you wanna do a continue, so it goes back to the beginning of this loop. Okay, fantastic. And I can do the same thing for remove items, edit items, and sales. Except, you know, obviously, we're two, three, and four. Well, for for choice two, I think you wanna say remove items.
Oh, yeah, my bad.